Calling to order. The Ellisville Town Council meeting, Monday, June 12th. Jimmy, start with you in the prayer. Yep.
All right, we finally get to this wonderful day. We thank you for the many benefits we have here in Ellisville. Just continue to bless us, lead and guide us the way that please be. Be with us tonight as we make those decisions that affect this town. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I would bless Jesus to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Was that? All right, roll call.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
All right, approval of minutes for the regular meeting, May 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, second.
Who said the motion?
Motion here.
And then Scott seconded.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Carried.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
I'll second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Carried.
We're ready to, motion carried?
Yes.
All right, open bids for pavement resurfacing, community crossings matching grant. Who has that? Darla. This is more exciting than Oscar night, isn't it?
First one is E&amp;B Paving LLC. One hundred eighty-six thousand, forty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. The second one is from Milestone Contractors. Total bid is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seventy dollars. So I would suggest that the town council take the matter under advisement, but it looks like one of them, they divided him up into different streets. Okay, I think they were just off a line. So I think the bid is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seventy dollars for Milestone. So I would ask the town council to take the bids under advisement so that the specifications can be reviewed by Denise Line and the street department and possibly Michael Farm.
Motion to table.
Second. William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, resolution 07-2023 to nullify resolutions 02-2020 and 03-2020, the tax abatement for the Richland Senior Citizens Housing Incorporated.
This was on the agenda for the last town council meeting, and as I believe I explained, the whole purpose of this document is to get the paperwork caught up for the auditor's office and the assessor's office. The town council had earlier granted a tax abatement for Richland Senior Housing Project, and now that the project is nearing its completion, the pilot payment in lieu of taxes agreement will kick in, and so we need to, or we have been asked by the auditor's office to prepare a resolution and submit it to them so that they can have a clear record of what's going on.
Any council discussion on this?
I apologize, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Scary.
That's right.
I didn't get a chance to read the emails today, Darla.
Mm-hmm.
Can you summarize what you sent out?
What I sent out was the ordinance, and I was trying to explain how the, maybe didn't do it very well, how the ordinance fits in with the resolution. The ordinance is a companion document, because if you're going to amend a pilot agreement, that has to be done by ordinance. And their closing on the Richland Senior Housing Project is August 1st. So obviously you have time to do a second reading on the ordinance if you want to. Well, you should do a second reading on the ordinance unless the town council wants to follow the procedure to pass the ordinance pursuant to the statutory procedure that allows you to pass it at first reading.
And to be, go ahead.
For closing, is it on August? Is that what you said?
August 1st, yes.
So if we do this on a first reading rather than table it, then unless there's any substantial changes, the second reading would be fine, correct?
Yes.
I still do have some questions about it myself. I don't know how everybody else is feeling.
About the resolution or the ordinance, or both?
Kind of both. I guess I'm, for me, I'm trying to figure out, because in the emails that were sent, they said this area was already off the tax rolls. I'm just trying to see how that came to be and what the long-term plan. I mean, because we'll be signing something that would be in agreement until 2030 or 2052.
I think it's already off the tax rolls, William, because it's low-cost senior housing.
No, okay.
But I understand your confusion, because I had to go, it took me some time to go back through the resolutions that the town council had passed earlier and the ordinances and go back through minutes of the council to get my head wrapped around what was done in the past.
So by that logic, it never will appear on the tax rolls until it changes its function, correct?
I believe that's true, yes.
Okay. So it's immaterial?
Well, I mean, if I understand one of Yvonne Delvedillo's emails correctly, maybe one of them will end up on the tax rolls because it was a not-for-profit, which may not have the same status, but I'll check on that for you.
Any more council discussion on this? As long as, I'm comfortable since this is just the first reading, putting it as a first reading, and then next council session, we'll have two weeks to get our questions answered, or at least get my questions answered. I'm not speaking for the rest of the council.
Well, just as a point of order, if we're going to go that route, which is fine by me, I could care less, we need to first address resolution 7, 2023 by tabling it rather than having a nullified resolution out there for two weeks if we're not intending to move forward.
I would be thinking of both of the, because one's an ordinance, the other's a resolution, absolutely.
Yeah, the resolution, we need to dispose of it or table somewhere.
I'll be happy to make the motion for that if somebody else doesn't want to.
All right, begin.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to table resolution 07, 2023 to nullify resolutions 02-2020 and 03-2020, the tax abatement for the Richland Senior Citizens Housing Incorporated.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And ordinance 2023-07 to amend pilot agreement for the Richland Senior Housing Incorporated. This was already kind of discussed by you, right, Darla? Is there anything you wanted to add?
Yes.
Is there anything you wanted to add to it?
I don't believe so unless somebody has a question.
Any council discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none. No ordinances on the second reading. A flood report. Mike?
Well, I guess we'll be at the next meeting presenting you with documents to let bids for the Vine Tree Project. And we have a schedule that we'll have for you for when we will open the bids. And there will actually be a pre-bid meeting, pre-construction bidding, bid meeting. I believe it's on the 12th of July, so all this will happen within a month.
Fantastic.
And the plan is to open the bids, I believe, at the second meeting in July.
Which is the 26th.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth, yeah, somewhere there.
Do we need confetti for that meeting to, while we open the bids, do we need confetti?
Well.
Is it in the budget?
I thought it was like the
Same as best.
Award, no, awards.
The Oscars? That was just the last one. This is, all right.
We're pretty excited to get started.
We're not going five hours, yes, you're right.
This is Vine, this is Vine Tree.
It's more like, all right, envision Ellisville update, Dan.
You should all be getting this email reminder, but our next task force meetings are going to be on June 27th, Tuesday, June 27th. From 10 to 11 will be the business task force, from 1 to 2, the connectivity task force, and from 3 to 4, the gathering task force. And if you're a member of those task force, please try to come, and if you want to just come and see what's going on, we welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, new business, fire department request, request to hire a bunch of people. I mean, why don't you go over that?
Last council meeting, boy, that's loud. Last council meeting, Chris brought three names to the board for contingent offers for full-time positions. We're awaiting those physicals to come back and so forth. But with, assuming those continue to go through, that's going to leave a large void of part-time, plus we were already in need of some. So the six names that are on here, I sent an email out late afternoon because I failed to put one name on there. But I have six names to bring to you tonight, same thing for a contingent offer based on their, it would be a fit-for-duty physical. It's basically the same physical minus the per part of it. And these would be part-time positions. It's not any extra hours, any extra money, anything like that. It's just using the hours that are already budgeted for. So I can read the names and we can do them one at a time if that's your preference, or we can just?
I'd prefer, if it's possible, that we could do it all in one resolution. Darla, is it possible, or do we need to do them separately?
I think it's fine to do them all at once. I would kind of prefer separately, but that's okay. If you really want to do them all at once, that's fine.
What's the, what's the council's pleasure?
Let's do them individually.
Okay.
When we're done with that, I got a question. I don't want to get in the middle of this.
You want to go into, yeah. All right, any public discussion on this? Seeing none. All right. Do you want to make the, the first one, which would be Nicholas Fortenberry? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Yep, I'll make a motion for Nicholas Fortenberry to be hired as part-time firefighter pending results of the fit-for-duty testing.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next name is Tyler Hatfield.
I'll make a motion to appoint Tyler Hatfield as a part-time firefighter pending results of his fit-for-duty test.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next gentleman is Luke Corrie.
Corrie.
Yeah, what he said.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for Luke Corrie to be hired as a part-time firefighter pending results of his fit-for-duty test.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is JD Waldrop.
Make a motion for JD Waldrop to be hired as part-time firefighter pending results of his fit-for-duty test.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Robert Harrington.
Make a motion for Robert Harrington to be hired as a part-time firefighter pending the results of his fit-for-duty test.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last gentleman is Cash Turner.
I'll make a motion for Cash Turner to be hired as a part-time firefighter pending the results of his fit-for-duty test.
Second.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, my question, and maybe it's addressed to Darla, but as the council's whole. Clearly, as the Board of Public Safety functioning as such for the town, we have to approve hires for full-time employees. Is there something in code or something within the ordinances of the town that require us to approve part-time employees? This just seems very cumbersome. He's not impacting the budget at all.
Right.
He's using up his hours.
Let him do it internally.
Let him do it internally with Mike's, the town manager's acquiescence. Because they're not, while they are sworn firefighters, it's not that we're conveying some power of law, and then as we are the part-time police officers. It just seems very cumbersome. Again, he's competing for folks.
Right.
So to make them wait two, sometimes three weeks before they have an answer, that just seems.
I think the code says that the town council's responsible for all hiring and firing, but if that's true, if my memory serves me correct, if you want to do an amendment to the ordinance to exclude police and fire, we can do that.
I would honestly prefer to exclude all part-time employees. Yeah?
Well, I believe that the board has allowed the rest of the departments to hire part-time people without approval of the board.
Right.
I think the difference here, though, is public safety. Wouldn't that be, I mean, code-wise?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's true.
Yeah, but with, with, no offense, Mike, the fire officials, there's a little bit different. I won't say standard or burden. With the police, yes, we are conveying power and authority, code of law. With the fire guys, we're just saying, chief, are you satisfied?
No, I understand. I just want, kind of addressing Mike, why it may be different.
It is so competitive right now. And again, Mike, you may feel differently. You want to do something different here. Kevin, you may want to do some, I was thinking, I was thinking of him looking at you. So. Thinking of him.
So Kevin, what do you think?
I mean, Mike, Kevin, whoever you are now.
Yes.
Do you see it different here?
No, and I like the way you framed it. It seems logical to allow the fire department to move forward.
You have, what, six people here that have been waiting for two or three weeks?
Correct.
Longer for us to get it on the agenda. That's just a recipe for losing folks.
I agree.
Would you, I mean, this is something you'd prefer if we did this?
Yeah, I have no issues with this. I mean, we still have all the steps to follow, and I can run through it with Mr. Farmer before, make sure he's good with it, and I could still notify you guys. That's not a problem.
Yeah.
Right, because it's, I mean, again, we don't approve any volunteers or anything like that.
Right. We don't want to get in that business.
Just people, well, it's the same thing. We're just approving people who are getting paid. Doesn't matter who pays one of these six or one of the ten others he has.
So we're going to need an amendment on the ordinance then?
Okay.
Sounds like, probably.
I mean, if everybody agrees, you guys may not want to do that.
I think you're right. With the competitive nature of the hiring, I think it probably suits us best for that.
So Darla, we probably need a vote on the council's feelings of whether we need to write an amendment to the ordinance, correct?
Yes. Or you can, if I believe there's a consensus, I can just go ahead and prepare the ordinance, and it can be ready for the next meeting.
The only caveat I would say is make, is as long as it's funded. I mean,
Is it?
As long as there's, there's funding for it. I mean.
Well, part-time is, they only have, they have a pool.
Right.
So if two draw off of it or 20 draw off of it, it's the same pool.
Right, but if we're in the negative, I'd like to be able to have some, if that pool's exhausted. I'm not talking about with Kevin, but, because what we're doing is, from here on out, setting the, so, yeah. If, as long as it's a budget, how, you know, understand what I'm saying, Kevin? As long as you have the money in the line.
Sure, you just can't work them with their.
The hours are already budgeted. It's who works them is, he needs a more, a larger pool.
I get that, but I'm saying as, as long as we have, you know, that money and we don't have a, and like I said, Kevin, Chris, I'm not worried about anybody that I know of, but we don't want someone abusing it nor, you know, hiring 40 part-time people.
No.
And the pool's exhausted.
Sure, just what brought this up, there's, I was kind of surprised to see one of these names on this list because that person is somebody you better snap up right now because he's an incredibly qualified paramedic. And to let him wait three or four weeks, that, that flirted with stupidity on my end, but yeah.
Believe me, I'm, I'm on board with that. I just want to make sure that we, you know, plan for the worst and hope for the best, so to speak.
Sure, absolutely.
So Darla, would that be hard, putting into the ordinance as long as it's like a budgeted?
No, that's, that's fine.
I mean, I'm good with, I, I'd love to see an ordinance like that. Any other council discussion on that? Dan, Pam?
I'm fine with it.
Dan, what's your thoughts?
I'm fine with it. If memory serves me right, I think we kind of did this in the past, and we retroactive paid the firemen at one time, didn't we? Didn't Jim used to hire people and then?
It's not uncommon for it to be done when somebody gets a promotion for a rank, but the
Hiring?
Yeah, the hiring normally, I mean, it just starts when their hours start.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with it. Darla wants to bring it to the next meeting, we can vote on it and go from there.
Yep. I'm good with that.
Thank you.
So, Darla, I think you have the consensus.
Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion on that? All right, next consulting contract with Rick Kopick. That'll be you, Mike.
Yeah, I'll take that. So I think everybody knows who Rick Kopick is. For those who don't, Rick Kopick was an employee for Bynum Fanyo Associates, who were the engineers for the town since the late 80s, maybe 90. I, I, we couldn't even figure out when it started, but so he's been around quite a long time. He is, he was an engineer for BFA, and then he had a relationship with the town also through the BF, the Bynum Fanyo Utility Contract as well. So Rick's retired. He's no longer with BFA. And we do not have a engineer on retainer of any sorts. So between all the departments, less maybe the police and fire, we need services, consulting services, maybe on a daily basis, maybe once a week, sometimes not a whole month, but when it comes, we need somebody to turn to, to consult with. So for instance, the street department may have things regarding, you know, building of the streets and construction methods and this, that, and the other. Planning of land use and zone, zoning questions, as well as just how to take care of detention ponds and all things stormwater. Rick used to be the street department superintendent for the city of Bloomington as well, before he was, worked for Bynum Fanyo. He's an MS4 operator that we utilized for many years. And, and then he's helped direct operations and management for utilities for quite some time. So he has a plethora of talent when it comes to field engineering. And I just, we, we're lacking that now. We don't have anybody to turn to. We don't necessarily, we're not interested in him drawing plans for us or doing engineering that needs to be stamped for a project, say, of building a building or even a road or anything like that. But when it comes to the day-to-day questions, that would be the, the preliminary desire to know information on how we go forward to, say, even contract with an engineer to do a project. Or when we have plans that come in and we need to make sure they've, they followed all the rules, and somebody to read those plans and have that kind of background. And I'll just not even go into the utilities work. We, I probably talk to him every day. I talked to him this morning, and the whole time he worked for the town and worked for Bynum Fanyo Utilities, it was a day-to-day thing. So his, his versatility and his background with the town, he knows where all the skeletons are and, and how things work prior to almost everybody in here, probably everybody in here. And so we just think that him being on a consulting contract allows us to reach out to somebody without spending a large sum of money or contracting with utilities and engineer and then waiting in line for us to get the answer. It just expedites us being able to know what to do next. So we think hiring, we talked about trying to hire him as an employee, did not want to be an employee, so I talked to Darla about this. And, and so being a consultant seems to be the way to go. So I talked, so, you know, we think, he, he said, well, at first he was just going to give us a per-hour contract, but then we decided he'd, you know, five hours a month. We surely will call him at least that much, so we, he came up with a retainage for, per month. And the only thing we have to work out is insurance. So have I left anything out? So the insurance, we, we, everybody's come to the conclusion that he should be insured. So he did not include that in the contract. I spoke with Mark Webb, or Mark Mads, I'm, I was thinking somebody else. But anyway, so he worked, he works for the insurance company, the first insurance group that has our insurance in town. And he tells me that we can probably get the type of insurance he needs for less than 1,500. But after I talked to him, I decided maybe less than 5,000 was a better monetary amount to present to the town. And so that would probably have to be part of the contract, so he doesn't pay that, otherwise he, why would he work for us? So we, we, Mark says, we, Mark says we indeed should have him insured. And in fact, they could insure him, which would be, I think, good for the town, that same people that knows what they need for insurance takes care of us, so.
When you talk about insurance, errors and omission insurance, or if he's out in the field and get?
It's, it's just to.
In the contract, I have written in that he needs errors and omissions and, let's see here.
That's, couldn't escape general liability.
Yeah, general liability.
Team effort.
And I think he wants to be insured. I don't, I don't think he wants to do this without being insured.
Yeah, yeah, he, I think he may have brought it up first. So I'd be glad to let any of the other departments talk about his work.
Rick retired, I think it was last July, from Bynum Fanyo and Associates. And so periodically I've had to contact him for some interpretations or somebody wanted to move draining and get rid of a sidewalk and, you know, I don't understand the drainage calculations and had to have him look at him. But he also has taught me things to look for and different things, so I don't have to contact him all the time. So I appreciate that. So I just want you to know he's continued to be very helpful to me even after he retired.
He's also been real helpful with the street department as well, street and, and stormwater on the, on the maintenance side of it. When we get people that calls in that has problems with the yards or vice versa, things that goes on. And also him being MS4 operator in the past. I know that, I've talked to Ron Van Devener, and he's really excited to be able to work with, with, with him as well because we are getting ready to have our stormwater audit coming up this year with us. So Rick's been real helpful, and I'd really enjoy if he would be able to be on call for us.
Okay. Council discussion? Council discussion?
So he doesn't work for Bynum Fanyo no more?
He does not. He consults to Bynum Fanyo Utilities still. And then he gets paid by Bynum Fanyo Utilities for his consulting time. So he's retired. But he does still work with Bynum Fanyo Utilities, but he's paid as a consultant, not unlike this.
Okay, I just have one more thing I want to say. When did all this come about that you guys decided that you wanted him to get to where we're at for the contract because I have asked repeatedly that we be involved because I didn't even know anything about Rick and this thing coming up until what, last Thursday or Friday, when the agenda was set out? And I'm not blaming her.
Couple of weeks ago, week ago, I, I can't remember. We've been talking, anybody help me out? We've been talking about it for a week or two at least.
I had to get with Rick and, and get with him and find out what his terms were.
Okay, because it's just like, I don't like to come in and vote on stuff that I probably didn't know about till a day ago, maybe two, you know?
If you want to.
I just would like to be, I would like to be informed more, I guess what I'm saying.
I, I get that. I get that. And I probably should have said something, but we had to come to terms with Rick before I could say anything because I wasn't sure he was going to do it. And so, um, uh, your point's well taken, but we can wait. But, um, we're all waiting to talk to him now. So, um, I apologize as best I could do about that.
Well, I don't have a problem with voting for him, okay? I already know what's going on now, but I just would appreciate, because there's been other things that come up at the last minute. I would appreciate as a town council to know because it doesn't look very good on me to vote on stuff. I really don't know what's going on. I just appreciate you, a phone call from you, because I know Kevin, even though it's on the agenda, Kevin is real good about sending out emails and reiterating to us, this is what I want to do. I would just like to know.
And I try to petition the board individually as I can and sometimes they don't.
You want me to start calling you once a week and saying, what's new?
I would love it if you called me and say, hey, what's up? That would be great.
Every Friday I'll say, what happened this week? I can do that. But no, I don't have a problem if everybody else don't. Go ahead and vote.
Well.
Well, but what's the insurance? What do you intend to do with the insurance issue? Because that was the hangup.
And I'll suggest that that monetary amount with the caveat not more than five thousand be added to the monthly fee paid to Rick Copick.
Well, quite honestly, I think it's in the town's best interest to have all the employees, consultants, however you want, advisors insured because, again, things happen. Um, you know, more to your point, I'm sorry you didn't work with him before when he was with the town, but this is probably one of the not only best people for this job that, you know, not in my huge experience, but that we've ever met, come across.
Oh, I've met him.
And quite frankly, Rick's just good people and kind of guy that you want to go out and talk to folks. And more knowledgeable about Ellisville, I'm not sure other than perhaps Mike, that that exists.
I don't have a problem with him. I just have the problem that maybe that might not let me know.
Well, again, if it comes back to what he's actually going to do for us, you know, again, what's under the ground, what's above the ground, what's raining here, raining there, there's your guy, you know? Um, so I'm all for this and I think it behooves us to make sure that not only is he insured, but he's properly insured and he gets on the town to, to, to provide that. So I would be all for that.
And then go ahead.
I can appreciate what Pam's saying. It's always good to know, to be in the know and know exactly what's coming at you and not be surprised at the last moment. So I really get that. Now, on the other hand, I've worked with Rick for years and years. I worked with him on the planning commission. He's a very knowledgeable guy. Um, I think it was me that got him on the retainer several years ago. Um, because you just go to him with an, or with a question, he has an answer right then. If not, he, he looks into it and definitely follows through. So I would highly recommend Rick being on the consulting. It's too bad we can't get him as a full-time employee sometimes, but I'd gladly support it.
So you ready for motion or?
Well, I just, one thing I was just going to say is I think a lot of our other consultants we hire, they probably have that insurance on their own since they're working with multiple companies. So.
We're going to be talking about that next and it's going to be a surprise too. So.
Yes, it's not even on the agenda. All right, yeah. Uh, any public comment? Council action?
I'd make a motion that we, I'm not sure how to put this, hire or contract with Rick Copick, sorry, Copick for consulting services, uh, at a price agreed upon by himself, the town manager, not to exceed five thousand dollars for insurance and whatever hourly fee is agreeable to the town through its manager.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swacher?
Yes.
Kimon Samuels?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. He's the best guy I ever worked with.
All right.
I appreciate having him onboard.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, next privilege of the floor. Any public comments, something we haven't talked about tonight? Seeing none, I assume it's back to you, Mike, as you have.
Yes, under the heading, poor timing. Um, I have another surprise for you. So, um, as you know, we're doing the Vine Street Flood Mitigation. We're also doing the next level trail, um, that goes through town. And so, um, since we've decided when we're going to do it and how we're going to do it and we already have the grant for the trail and we're just around the corner from hiring somebody for, um, to take off on this flood mitigation, uh, since then, Eastern Richland Sewer Corporation has, um, informed us that they're interested in improving their interceptor, which is basically what collects everything and brings it to the sewer plant through our system and, uh, for sewer. And so it's, um, it's a project that's worthy and it's something that will eliminate a lot of their I and I. Um, the only problem.
What is I and I?
Oh, infiltration.
Yeah, infiltration, okay.
So, um, and so, um, when they told us about it, um, they would like to increase the size of their pipe. And so unfortunately their pipe will be bigger than our pipe. It's always a problem. And so, um, uh, so we like had to, uh, yeah, let it go. And we had to, um, we had to think pretty fast on our feet about how should we accommodate that? A portion of the pipe that would have to be enlarged, um, is, uh, in the way of the flood mitigation and its part, it's going to be a separate contract to move that and the town. We've talked about moving ourselves or farming it out to somebody else and bidding on it. But anyway, the, the point is it's got to happen soon. We've got to figure out what we want to do. We want to, I think we can do the flood mitigation and then do the sewer project afterwards. But the flood, but the sewer portion of it on their side would be right next to our trail. So we may have to, flex a little and, and move the trail. I'm not sure what to do. So we, um, contacted their engineering firm, GRW, and yes, I'll be done before I, um, and we contacted GRW who's working for, um, for Eastern Richland Sewer Corporation and asked them if they could do a preliminary study to, to, it's a system capacity analysis and a budgetary cost estimate for a capacity upgrade on our end. And so we need to have somebody that is engineers and PE background and, and, and put something together for us pretty quick. So they had give us, they had offered to do it at the time for about nineteen thousand dollars. And this was probably three, four weeks ago when they gave us that number. And so Jeff and I decided, Jeff said, we need to move on this quick. And so I just said, well, let's hire him and I'll sign it, which I did. And I hired him. So I talked to Darla about this and she goes, oh, maybe we ought to get the blessing of the board. So anyway, long story short, I signed it. I maybe need your vote. I'm not sure if I do, but just to be safe, I'd appreciate the agreement that's before you, that is somewhat of a surprise, um, uh, that you go ahead and vote on it. And I think Darla will be happy about that. I'm not sure you need to, but why not? Because we have to do this.
Do we not give him contracting authority under fifty thousand?
Um, in section thirty-three point oh three, you gave the town manager authority to serve as the town's purchasing agent um, for purchases or services between twenty-five hundred and less than fifty thousand if funds have been budgeted. However, there is thirty-three point one six in the town code which discusses purchase of services and says that only the town council can hire the services of attorneys, accountants, or engineers.
Yeah.
I would think those are conflicting ordinances, so the newer would take them.
Well, because, well, um, he could hire the services of anybody, just not attorneys, accountants, or engineers. So if there's somebody else providing a service, he could, as the town manager, if the cost is between twenty-five hundred and fifty thousand, he could do it.
My problem is I usually need to hire an attorney, consultant, or an engineer. So.
Well, again, I'm happy to change the code, but.
Where would the funding come? Where's the funding coming from?
Well, it'll come out of the utility sewer budget, which we have the money. Um, I would have got more than one price had this been a standalone project and, and something for the future. But it just does not seem like a good idea because we may press upon Eastern Richland Sewer Corporation some needs that we would have from them to help with this. And it seemed logical to use GRW, which has, I have, you know, I've known for a long time and they have a reputation to use their, their, um, their people to give us the information that we would give right back.
So it's kind of like, it's your people told us this needs done.
Absolutely. So. Does that make sense to anybody?
Kind of does. Any council action or discussion on this?
I guess comment, um, being the one who authored, I guess, the change in policy the last time, change in ordinance last time. The intent was anything fifty thousand and under, he would have the ability. And I, I guess that's my mistake for not having due diligence to look at the rest of the ordinances, but I assumed this one took precedence. Um, so I would move, I guess, that we changed the ordinance because that was not the intent. The intent is to give him the ability to be more flexible and reactive to the town's needs rather than waiting, as we've discussed already tonight, three weeks to move on something that has to happen right now. That, that just doesn't seem the way for this town to grow is to set ourselves in the nineteen fifties once again. Now, clearly, once it gets beyond a certain price tag, yeah, we, we should weigh in. But it's within the budget. He has the money. I think he acted incredibly properly here to move forward with the project for the reasons he's already stated. This just seems the council getting in the way of the town functioning appropriately.
And to be clear, I didn't think that you would be getting in the way. It just was a decision that needed to be made.
No, 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 no. This is me saying, we shouldn't even be involved in those things because, not this particular instance, any future instance.
But to be clear, I respect the process.
I, I get it. I do. But.
You may respect it, but the vendor you're dealing with may not, because if they have other jobs or bids, you know, that can.
Well, they just need enough. You need help or not.
Yeah.
I guess my only thought is that when you said you need an attorney, why would you need to hire an attorney?
Eh, maybe I, I don't need an attorney. I got Darla, so I, probably four, four words.
Especially if we're going to change that, definitely cannot change that in the code because if there is any kind of litigation, it is the council's duty to know what's going on.
I get that. I may need an attorney someday to talk to Darla because I've been.
Got you.
Don't hurt me.
A personal attorney, I got you.
I, I'm sorry. I shouldn't even say that.
It's a joke. Probably a better one.
I shouldn't have joked. I'm trying to get something done here.
So while I'm all for approving this to give him tacit approval on what he just did, I think the, the error, however, is not his, it's ours. Or mine, because I didn't see the other ordinance when we changed this, what, three, four years ago?
Um, I think it was in twenty seventeen, maybe.
Okay, a little longer than that.
I would just like to.
Oh, sorry, no, twenty fifteen.
Wow.
Even further.
I would, yeah, I guess, uh, my only concern about, I mean, this I'm okay with, but with changing the ordinance, I definitely agree. Uh, things happen quick, quicker now and you need some of that immediacy. Um, I just don't ever want to get in the situation again. Mike's not always going to be our town manager.
What?
And, yeah, I know, there's, I, and we've got other places.
We can put restrictions on that person later if we need to.
That's what I'm.
First, quite frankly, if you can't trust him on that, there shouldn't be sitting in that seat.
I don't disagree. And all it would take is once.
Well.
So I don't think that needs to be written in. The ordinance is more of a council discussion to that point that it's something we watch and if all of a sudden Mike has, you know, personals, you know, valet for some reason, then maybe we'll question it. But till then. Yeah, I.
If we are going to change the code on there, it, it, the only way that I'd be happy with it is I'm fine with you, you know, hiring a consultant like that under X amount of dollars, except I definitely want to be notified as soon, as soon as it happens.
You are in the bills every two weeks.
Well, I would like a little heads up, so.
Well, I thought this was the perfect time to talk about it.
I agree.
Any more council discussion, last call? Seeing none, council action?
Can I suggest that if the council's inclined to go ahead and approve the agreement between the town and GRW, that you retroactively approve the agreement for consulting services dated June first, twenty twenty-three?
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swacher?
Yes.
Kimon Samuels?
Yes.
Okay, so then let's go back to the code sections that you want changed. Do you want to just eliminate the one on purchases services?
Yes.
And give, um, Mike Farmer and/or the supervisors to purchase services between twenty-five hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Or just Mike Farmer?
I think.
And do you want to get rid of?
We can delegate his approval. I don't necessarily, I mean, I don't know if we want all the supervisors having that limit, but if Mike approves.
He signs off on it.
Yeah, Mike would, yeah. The town managers are go-to person.
Right.
Okay, so basically you want to do away with section thirty-three point one six that says only the council can purchase services of attorneys, accountants, or engineers?
Yes.
What, what does that say again?
Thirty-three point one six says the town council determines that each agency and department may purchase services except for the services of attorneys, accountants, or engineers in whatever manner the purchase, purchaser determines to be reasonable. Only the town council may purchase the services of attorneys, accountants, or engineers.
And we're leaving that, correct?
Well, that's what I'm asking, if you wanted to, because it sounds like at least one of you wants to get rid of that paragraph in its entirety.
Well, but the attorneys and stuff I think needs to stay in there and accountants. I think services I'm, I'm okay with.
Attorneys and accountants are services.
I'm sorry, what?
Attorneys and accountants is our services.
Right, but you're saying omit that whole section. So then that takes it out of our hands right there.
No, well, yes.
Attorneys, and I'm not good with that. I'm, I'm fine with taking the part out of the services, but attorneys have to stay in our jurisdiction. I mean.
So how about we?
I'm good with, oh, yeah, I agree with you.
How about we strike this particular, was it thirty point what? And add it into the other.
The new one.
The first one where we changed it in twenty fifteen, just add a line there with the exception of attorney services or legal services, but strike the entire other ordinance.
I'm good with that.
Because otherwise we've got two ordinances hanging out there.
Yeah, I don't mind doing that, but I would definitely want to see it if Darla could prepare it, send it to us before the next meeting.
Okay, so what I hear is you want to, um, repeal thirty-three point one six, purchases of services in its entirety, and then you want to move that language, you want to move that language over to thirty-three point oh three and still give the council authority to hire all services?
No, give him authority to hire everything except an attorney.
Up to?
Fifty thousand.
Okay. So that's going to include all Baker Tilly services up to fifty grand?
Yep, I'd say write it up. Let us look at it.
Fifty grand, fifty grand.
And if you could, like I said, get it to us before the meeting, so in case I have any questions or anyone else does, we can address it before the next meeting.
Are you done with your comments, Mike?
Oh, no, I have one more.
Okay.
So on the, in this same vein, we, William asked me to set up a meeting with Baker Tilly, and we are going to discuss revenue streams for the town, including impact fees, things like that, levy appeal, we'll probably talk about that again. And so we are having that meeting at two o'clock on the fifteenth. That's this week. So Darla, first of all, did you get an invite to that?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we need to put you on there. So how many board members can be on an information gathering Zoom? Just two?
I would prefer to keep it to two, so we don't get into an argument later about what's information gathering versus what's deliberation.
Okay, so I wanted to let you know that that's happening.
When is it, June fifteenth?
Yes.
At what time?
Two P M.
Two P M.
But you can notice it as a work session. There won't be people attend.
If you want to do a work session, that's fine, and everyone.
And we have enough time to put it out.
We do it tomorrow.
So.
I think that would be the safe bet.
Put that together and make it a work session, and then we're going to attend in here. You know, any of the departments are invited for it. If we have enough people, we'll do it here. Now.
But if it's.
Does that?
Hold on. Scott brought up a good point. The public, work sessions are open to the public. How would this be open to the public?
They don't need to have public comment, though.
No, but how would we have them, we'd have to send out the Zoom link for Baker Tilly.
We would advertise it and.
We would do it the same way as when you have a work session typically. It'll go out as an email, and then I'll post it at town hall.
Okay, but I'm saying, would there be a link that they could join?
Just like when there was COVID.
Okay, I just want to make sure, same.
I don't think we did links on work sessions, did we?
Sorry?
We never did Zoom work sessions, did we?
Yeah, we did.
I think, yeah, because we didn't really have that many work sessions, if anything, during COVID.
Anything work sessions work better online than they do in person.
Right, I kind of. Okay.
Yeah, so this, on the second page, it'll just say work session, and it'll have the Zoom link information, but it'll also go out in email as well.
That will work.
Okay, so to be clear, so he's a, they're consultants, and I asked them for this. I'm sure they're going to charge me a couple hours for, or an hour for it. So is that when I have to get the board's approval to spend money like that?
Going to be under fifty thousand dollars?
Oh, I missed the fifty thousand.
Yeah, if it's more than fifty thousand dollars, we'll cancel. Well.
My bad.
Forty-nine ninety-nine.
Okay, I'm done.
All right, Jimmy.
Wow. I'm coming to unite with some guidance. That is loud tonight. I'm coming to unite with you some guidance or permission. If you remember right, five or six months ago, we hired a retired insurance executive to be our sports director for the Parks Board. He has now put together a run for the Fall, in conjunction with the Fall Festival, and we're looking at taking in entry fees, and we're hoping for fifty, seventy-five runners to be involved in this. And at twenty-five dollars a entry, that'll be a little more money than you want to keep in a shoebox. So what we're looking at, and do I need permission, or we want, we want to open, have Noel open a checking account for the Parks Board that we can funnel that money through and keep track of it? So again, I'd like your permission, or like Darla to tell me. I don't need permission, I guess is what I'm saying, so.
Would that not be a Parks Board decision?
I think it would be a Parks Board decision.
That's what I thought.
But all participants, I would prefer if they signed a release, and I'll, I'll draft.
Okay, we'll get that on Jenna next time. Get that taken care of. Thank you.
And Noel, that would help. Your guys is accounting, wouldn't it, to have a separate?
Yes, because the way that they would like to do it, it's similar to City of Bloomington when they have events. It, you just register for it, and it would be through a credit card. And I did look through the ordinance, and we already have an ordinance for credit cards, so it should not be an issue.
All right, Kevin? All right.
I'll name mine as short as possible. Just some general information. We, if you notice, we got the Walk Bridge put in over to the place set up here. There's still more stuff to come, I guess you'd say. Also, I just want to kind of go on. I don't know if Jimmy and Kevin could relate to this as well or not, but GovDills has been really great for my department. I finally sold the last of the three vehicles that I'd put on inventory for the sale. I just want to let you know that in perspective, one vehicle is thirty-two years old, twenty-eight years old, and twenty-three years old. And with all three of these vehicles, I got twenty-one thousand dollars.
Great job.
So, and it's already been put in the bank. And that's all I have right now. Oh, one other thing. Just so the people out there, is what I'm going to get it out there for. I've gotten emails from the police department. I've had a few phone calls, and I apologize, but it's out of my control. The lights on Cell Street have not been working at night. Just our street lights not do, but ours, the decorative lights. I called Cassie Electric today. They told me that we get somebody today. They didn't show up today. So we're going to have at least another night of darkness on Cell Street. It's a park issue is what it is, and hopefully we'll get it remedied pretty soon. So I just want to let you all know about that.
Okay.
I'll wait to council comments.
Okay. Denise?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Noel?
Nothing.
I have one more.
Make it quick, please.
I will. There is a lot going on in our town.
Yes.
There's a lot of people coming to town to visit. I think it would be appropriate that all the board members call me and set up a time when they can talk to me, and I can bring them up to speed on what's going on in our town. Our growth is just beginning.
All right, Scott, I know you were wanting to say something, so.
Well, again.
It's council comments now, so.
An idea where we get into, because he just brought it up, as we're coming up to budget season. So again, to kind of make it a little more transparent, a little more clean. So he sells three vehicles for twenty-one thousand dollars, right? Money goes back to general fund.
Correct.
Correct.
Or does it? Do you have a non-reverting?
It goes back to where it was used from.
Okay, great.
So my intent, you all remember that you approved me or approved Mike, that as soon as we get the right bucket truck here, I'm going to appropriate that money to use for my down payment.
That was.
That's cheaper than what I'm going to do for that bucket truck.
That's where I was going, to make sure that we're doing that, because anything that any of these departments sell should go back to them in a non-reverting fund, so it can sit there. Because otherwise, he would lose twenty-one thousand dollars and just get swept through next year, and there's frankly no value for a department to rid themselves of the older materials.
Right.
They can just sit there and let it rot. But if he's not using it, Jimmy, if he's not using a car, you know, Kevin, if he's not using a truck, get rid of the thing, take the money, and put it to something valuable. But I don't know that we have that going on in all of the departments, do we?
Noel, let me ask you, do we actually need a non-reverting fund for that, or can that just be allocated back to that budget line?
Yeah, we'll forget to do that.
Sandy will be back tomorrow.
Good answer.
Good answer. Good answer.
We're going to bring up this issue during budget because we have the same problem with permits and fees and planning. And so we're going to suggest just what you're thinking.
Yeah, because again, they're, they're doing a lot of hard work, and they're, we keep getting in the way of them making the town run and making it harder. Let's stop doing that. And this seems to be my night to parrot that several times, but come on, guys, we, we just got to get out of the way. They're doing a fantastic job. Let's get out of the way.
One thing that I would suggest, and I'd again, just kind of taking the temperature of the room on this, I would like to have an early work session on the budgets before you guys have even really met and gotten your i's dotted and t's crossed, so you guys can see kind of where we're at and work within those confines of, of guidance. Instead of coming to us with a budget and us pretty much picking it apart or asking a million questions, this way, we're kind of, we know what you're thinking, and before you guys have spent weeks on it, you kind of know the framework we're looking at.
Well, okay. We, we can do it any way we want to do it. I think the, that your interaction with us prior to the budget season, which will start July first.
Right.
Excellent, July sixth.
I understand.
We, it'd probably be good to have those conversations now.
Right.
You're thinking more of a broad strokes, big picture.
Yeah, not sitting there, micromanaging, saying five thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars there, just kind of, here's our overall thoughts.
We want to focus on infrastructure. We want to focus on.
Yeah, and to be clear, to date, we really haven't made any plans at all.
And that's why I want to get in.
Because we're not sure where we're going to be.
Because one thing I don't want to do to you guys is have you do a lot of time, effort, and work to get something done, and then we come in and have four or five sessions afterwards and say, what about this? What about this? What about this? Because I know you've already done that thought process a million times, and you're like, well, I wish you would have told me this concern while I was drafting it. It would have saved me a lot of time or a lot of effort. And that's what I'm trying to, that way, we, this is a collaborative effort.
Sure, I, I agree with that, and as I tell everybody every year, it's a five-cow feeder, and we have six cows trying to eat. So we're, we, everybody that has something they'd like to see happen in the town, especially the board, we really want to know up, up front, yeah.
Are you looking at this as a group or individual departments to start with?
I would actually, I think a group would be better. And the reason being is just so we can kind of get a consensus from the council to you guys on what we're looking at. Because I, I don't, and again, this is just me. I'm not trying to speak for other council members. I'm not trying to micromanage fire department, streets, police. But, you know, if we're going to say, hey, this is a focus, then you guys can, okay, you guys said the focus is here, and we've got a budget aligning to the focus for what you said. Scott, you sound, seen some discomfort there.
A little bit.
Okay.
And the reason here is, is not so much, I don't even know how to phrase it, because it's a thought that's evolving.
I understand.
The problem with focus is that focus tends to change by board member per year.
Yes.
As opposed to, again, I'm comfortable whether we're talking big strokes, you know, big ideas, as opposed to making him prepare, you know, using Kevin as an example, making him prepare documents that I'm, you know, anticipating a ten percent growth in this line, I'm five percent growth in that line.
That's not what I want either.
Right, and again, just so we're all clear on, on, I think it's more for us, at least on my end, of Mike saying, guys, like, you know, I'm looking at this amount, this amount for raise, where you guys are comfortable. I'm thinking of, you know, we need to replace this or whatever else, but not getting into the minutia so much of, hey, we're going to hire four more guys, we're going to have two more guys. We need this truck, we need that truck, whatever else. So there's not a whole lot of work on their thought process on their end. I'm just, having seen it happen in the past, and I know this is the ghost of Christmas past, as it were, that focus where the council tends to wonder, because we're not here every day. For these folks, it is a linear thought process. We are driving to a goal. I might want to make sure that we don't derail goals even slightly by our thought process and focus wandering around hip here.
I'm hoping it wouldn't be the case.
If that makes sense.
It does, so.
Well, I, I'd like to say, you know, our focus changes even when we come to consensus on how we need the budget to be.
Right.
And it's a little give and take in all the departments because we have a five-cow feeder.
Right.
And so, but it also changes by circumstances. And unlike the last twenty years, I thought twenty-twenty-two was a big year. We had twenty-two, by coincidence, we had twenty-two new commercial services, more than we'd ever had total before then. And that, and twenty-twenty-two is not going to be our big year. So our focus changes by circumstances, and sometimes it changes right up till when the budget happens.
Right.
So, you know, transportation are big items. Where do you want to build a road? Do you want a boulevard to the high school? Do you think we ought to have a new secondary road somewhere? Those things, we probably really need to know what you want. And police and fire hires, you know, how diligent are you going to be about making their roster larger so we can meet the demand? Usually, the demand comes first, and then we try to catch up with it. So if we can do something to make that work better, that'd be great, but it always seems like demand comes first, and then we try to catch up.
Right.
Utility expansions, if you want to talk about and help direct large projects that cost a million dollars, those are coming up. So really, we probably ought to have a give and take on some of our larger projects, but no matter what we decide, it's going to be changed by circumstance, and I guarantee it because.
Even throughout the year, circumstances come up.
Well, they're no, they are pending.
Yes, but I mean, it's like, if we know there's a big capital project, like one of the things I want to discuss, what are we setting aside money-wise to pay for that? You know, something like that.
Yeah, and we don't have a lot of money to set aside.
Right, but that's something we have to discuss.
Revenue streams is so important because we are going to have to look at our revenue streams, and, you know, it's just like the water rate increase. Nobody wanted to do it.
Right.
But we absolutely have.
I don't want.
We have this list that we said this needs to be funded. So the same thing for the civil city is coming up, and I, I just don't want to, I want you to, I don't want to understate how the circumstances are going to change.
No.
And that's why we need these individual conversations sooner than later. And then, I mean, you really, I'd really like to see the board get involved in the, in the plan commissions, how they are going to work through the U D O.
Right.
Land use, zoning changes. I mean, we're going to have things that happen that everybody's not going to be for. And so it would be nice if we came to a consensus prior to the event, so, and I can give you all the for instances you need. So when it comes, there's a smooth process for bringing people into the fold and becoming part of Ellisville, or why we don't want that to happen.
Right, we need to really get buy-in from the public on these things, and I mean, I think that's part of it. The council and supervisors, we need to kind of lead with the public, not necessarily drive the ideas, but say, here's why we're doing this, because once it's explained, you get the buy-in, and you see that some of the temperature goes down on some of these hot button issues. But it's like, just for instance, you ever wonder why these older towns and counties especially, look at the courthouse in Monroe County, built limestone. How much would something like that cost to build today? Same quality, same materials?
Millions.
Millions of dollars. But do you know how they did it then? They didn't bond for it. They had the money aside. They knew they had to build a courthouse.
The state funded all the courthouses.
I don't, whoever the state or county, but the point is, it wasn't a bond.
Well, it goes back to revenue streams.
Right.
Meeting we're having with Baker Tilly is important, and I don't know that we can turn the temperature down. I'm just going to say this. We are going to be in hyperdrive for a while, and so it'll always feel a little hot in the room, and we will have to make some decisions, and so this, this prior conversations that we have is important.
Right.
So we can make a move. Time's not going to let us wait.
No, the turning the temperature down, I'm not talking about waiting. I'm talking about getting the public buy-in, instead of the public saying, this sucks, the public saying, oh, I see why they're doing that. That's good. And it's going to take a lot of work.
Right.
I mean, I, you know, with the water rate increase, I've probably spent hours talking to the public on it, but you know what? There's only one or two people that are outraged with it, because they understand.
Well, I'd sure be, I'd sure would like to be aggravated by you guys too much in the next.
But, I mean, so.
I need to talk.
Again, back to what we're saying, what's. Again, back to what we're saying, what's, what's the thoughts on having a pre-budget work session?
Yes.
What about you guys?
I'm good with it.
It's fine.
More importantly, or just as important, what about the council? If I'm the only one who wants it, there's no need to have it.
Why don't you guys weigh in? I mean, I already said my piece.
A pre-budget work session. Before they really start on the budget for us to kind of.
Hey, you know the answer from me. I've always said that, so.
I told you I was going to try to do that this year, did I not?
But, but I will say, it's just as important that you talk to me individually.
Absolutely.
Because there's some, it goes well when it's just one-on-one and I can hear your individual needs, what your considerations are, and you can hear exactly, exactly where we're at.
Yes, and I absolutely agree with that. As you and I have been communicating fairly more than recently.
Right, right, right.
But those given, those things are great because questions not only get answered, but we're moving forward on.
Well, I guess one thing, I don't mind doing it if you want to do it. I mean, I'm only in for that. The, the fear, the fear is that a modified version of group think takes over and we begin to, to not either really express our own individual opinions and/or he's not able to delve deeply to, you know, what you may be saying because I brought up a point or Trevor brought up a point. Whereas I think potentially for him, and Mike, don't we put words in your mouth, the one-on-ones are potentially a lot more valuable in the aggregate than one giant meeting with competing voices. You know, now, that said, if we want to have, again, the high level, great. I just really have this growing hang-up on the realization that we do sometimes more damage than we do good by, I don't want to say injecting ourselves because that's our job, but as serving as a part-time leader as opposed to a full-time, okay, we're good, don't go here.
Right, they're in the trenches.
Exactly.
Most of our vision should probably stem from the bottom up. So I mean.
We should be the cross-check on.
We, we got to, I mean, I, what I want to do is hear where your guys' heads at. But the reason I want to do it in group is because if I'm talking individually, I may have a million ideas. It may be great, but until I hear Scott listening to me, or Trevor, or Dan, or Pam, those things, there may be a flaw with it, or they may be, hey, that sounds like a good idea, but how about we do this even better, this way? So that's why I think those group sessions are needed. Just more than just the town council, the, the two weeks we meet, especially during the budget, because every year this budget is going to be the biggest budget we've ever passed because the town is growing so fast. So any mistakes we make are going to be amplified for years down the road. Any good things we do are going to be setting the groundwork for years down the road. So that's, that's kind of where my head's at. But yes, I do agree with the, the individual communication's great. And I think for me, emails best. Kevin, Kip, and even Mike and Darla, you guys send out regular emails kind of on what's going on. And I can call if there's more. But if people, I'm sure none of you have ever said, we can't call you and talk to you about stuff. I've done that with all three and I know everybody here probably has. And Denise, I don't talk to you as much, but I will be. I've tried a couple of times, but you guys are so busy. Not that the other ones aren't. But anyway, I mean, back to this, it would have to be, probably be the, towards the end of June, because I don't want to mess up their plans.
We don't make it just.
But is this the council's pleasure to do something like this? Because if not, we need to book, if so, we probably need to book it today so we can get as many people possible.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good with the, the group meeting too. I just, I can, I'm concerned with, does one group meeting turn into micromanaging for five, six group meetings? And I don't think that's going to be necessary.
I'm, I'm hoping not, and that's why I'm hoping if we get in at the beginning, that's kind of, we can see any landmines up ahead.
Yeah.
So Scott and Pam, what are your thoughts? Scott's already giving a stop.
I just like to get together for work sessions, not to get into business. I like to hear their needs. Like it was really when we had that, here, you guys talked about you need firefighters and I just kind of like hear the department heads, their needs or something they'd like to see or.
Now that, I think, would be great one-on-one. This is more of a, from the bird's nest view.
Yeah.
But I'm not saying, you're wrong with that, absolutely. That was a powerful presentation at the fire department.
But, but when you talk about the 30,000-foot view of all this, I, I've got to go back to the land use and UDO and all that. That's where you can really make your mark by at least interjecting what you think should happen and making it clear, I'm not sure what the protocol is for talking to the plan commission, the board talking to the plan commission, two of them's on it and our clerk's on it. So there has to be a mechanism for them to help with that. But I think you need to pay attention to what is or isn't happening on those accounts because that's really the 30,000-foot view.
I do agree. But I would honestly think with the reps we have on the plan commission would be communicating what the council has said about things. That's kind of, we have reps on these boards.
A good analogy of what we need to talk about is, do we do a bond issue and then what would you do with the money? Things like that.
See, here's the problem. And again, Williams, if you want to do it, I'm, I'm fine. I don't care. I don't necessarily see the value like you do, but that's why we have five council members so that we can have opposing views. This is where the state of Indiana has set towns up to fail, by us having to be both the executive and the legislative body at the same time. It's a little difficult to be a cross-check on yourself, even if there is five of us. And that's essentially what we're trying to do. We're trying to be executive and legislative, and hopefully we do them separately, but sometimes we cross the streams and as Ghostbusters taught us, that's bad.
Right.
You shouldn't cross the streams. That's my fear is that we get into too much of crossing of the streams and we leave mixed messages behind. Instead of being future thought as what Mike just alluded to, it's not so much what we're buying today, it's the priorities we're setting for 15 years from now.
Right.
You know, because this council has always been more concerned about next Tuesday, been five years from next Tuesday or 10 years from next Tuesday. You know, you talked very well earlier about setting the stage for future purchases.
Right.
We, we, yeah, we don't do that. We just wait till everything's completely spent and then, hey, we need to find some money somewhere.
Right, and that's to me not the smart way.
So we need to, again, if we're going to do this at the higher level, going, that's fine for whatever you guys are going to budget for this year, but we need to be working toward this goal in five or six years or identify this. Not so much get into the, you can have two trucks, you can have three people, you can have whatever else.
Right, that, again, I, I mean, that, if, to me, if you want to have that type of discussion, then I think it's best that after we have kind of this bird's eye discussion, you know, if, if you want to talk to Kevin or Jimmy or Mike individually and talk to them about their individual needs, or Denise, or Noel, that's one thing. But I guess we're trying to say our overall, here's, we want to communicate clearly a consensus of our vision for the future of Ellisville and the town.
And I don't know that right now.
I, exactly. And it's not fair to you guys for you to operate from a budget or anything else when you don't have, now granted, we're going to have five different visions. That's fine, because I get you, bet you anything, if we draw a Venn diagram of those five different divisions, there's going to be parts that overlap. And that parts that overlap is what we need to move forward with.
Then I would make this suggestion, and it's going to come off wrong, but let me explain.
Okay.
We don't need the department heads there. This should be between the council and Mike. He is, he is our representative as the executive and it should funnel through him both ways as opposed to everybody having their own priorities set on the table, no fault to them, nobody's doing it intentionally. We need to have one point of contact with the rest of the town and he'll have to set priorities within that.
And he will work as the executive in this situation.
He will work, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
I'm okay with that as long as the department heads don't feel like we're, I mean, we'll still talk with you during the budget session.
We're not making decisions about, you get two trucks, you get three people. This is a vision session and I, what I don't want is to expect them to come to the table with, you know, no disrespect, I need this. And he's like, we can't afford that this year. But everybody has, all of us have our own little favorite here.
Right.
Well, I'm going to argue for five trucks over here, well, I'm going to argue for two people over here. Now we're back at that loggerheads where he is not able to chart a path forward. This is just to be a visionary session, much like envision Ellisville.
Yes.
This is a visionary session with our appointed executive who works for us, and he's exactly right, where he can bring up things like the UDO, things like that, that, again, not to usurp power from the department heads because they are, they are the day-to-day, they do this. But if we're going to throw this out there, and I don't think it's a bad plan, I just want to make sure we structure it a way where we're not usurping power from him, dealing with the overall forward movement of the town.
I agree with you and you just made the case for all of us being together because if it were just me, I would have said, everybody. But you make a great case. That's why I think with those different viewpoints, but still a big overlap, that's why we need to all, but I agree with Mike, that would be good because if we're kind of delegating him quasi-executive function, he's kind of our cross-check.
Yeah.
As close as we have.
Right. As close as it could all we can come up.
Right. So I'm okay with that. Well, how do you, how do the department heads feel on that?
Well, let me say something first.
Okay.
I feel like I painted myself into a corner just a little bit. And my strength in anything I've ever done up till now in the business I'm in has been because of the people I've worked with.
Right.
I mean, everybody, I, I couldn't, I'd like to tell you how important that's been all this time and especially since becoming the town manager. So I'm a little.
Let me cut you off just a second. I'm trying to reduce their burden, their fear. That way they don't have to go in going, I know he's not going to prove this, but I got to say it. And then all of a sudden now they feel like, oh, I didn't go down the road, it was, I shouldn't. This shouldn't be about how many trucks you get, how many people you get. That should come to us in budget. This should be about, guys, we want to prioritize a purchase five years from now, or we want to prioritize expansion here. This should not be about what you're doing day-to-day or the money you get to run it day-to-day.
Okay, well, a little that goes, a little that goes on, but in the last three years, we've pretty gelled pretty much as.
I get it, I get it, but let's just not.
I overtalk people sometimes, but usually, uh, I'm just saying, we've really gelled as what the future of Ellisville should be. I mean, we feel.
This should be more of a strategic planning session, I guess.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. And Mike, if you, if, if we hit, if we do this just with you and you feel that this is something that we have to bring the supervisors in on, then we can always schedule another time.
Well, I can't express expertise in how.
We don't need the expertise, so that's what, that's what Scott and I are saying.
Okay.
Because, I mean.
This should be thinking, Mike, we want to go this way and you're like, can't go that way because I can't make the pipes reach.
Right.
Okay, not, I want to go that way, we can't do that because we don't have five trucks.
Well, we like the UDO going, you know, north on commercial investment, you know, development, and here's what we're looking at, and you know the resources that's going to be needed. You know what, and, because you will be talking to Kevin and, and Jimmy and Denise and Noel and Kip, you'll be able to know, okay, to get what your vision is, this is what they're going to need in the future.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I feel like we're all peers, so they're going to make fun of me after this.
Oh, they'll make fun of you whether we do this or not.
They'll still play with your recess, it's okay.
And you'll still get invited to the reindeer games, right?
No, I'm not sure.
Get your ready.
Okay, I'm fine with it.
So, are we all on board for?
It's fine.
Dan?
Sure.
Okay. Pam? What date?
Eight o'clock tonight.
No.
That would be no.
Will my lawyer be there?
You'll have to hurry.
No, I got one, I really.
How about the 19th?
Let's see.
June?
Yep.
I'm out of town.
Okay. So Trevor's out of town, I wouldn't, I'd like to be able to, when you back in town?
Hmm, 20, see. I'm available 29.
Ouch.
You out, Scott?
I could be, 29th and 30th I won't be able to do.
Yeah, I'm not going to be able to do the Unis then.
And I'm going, but we kept the 4th to the 17th.
Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to do something in June, I think that would be best for everybody.
Do your 19th and then just send me a.
Can you zoom? Zoom in?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Send you the notes.
Yeah, send me. It's a holiday.
It's a one-way honor? I don't think so.
Or some, yeah, for some it's a holiday.
Are we closed on 19th? So then, normal day business for us. So you guys okay 6:00 PM the 19th?
July 19th.
June.
Juneteenth.
You look at your calendars, I'll be right back.
We need to go.
Denise, the restroom.
I'm out, I'm out of town that whole week. And I can get, I can get with Mike when I get back.
When are you anticipating bringing the budget to us?
It'll be, I mean, it'll be end of July.
I'm not starting working on mine. I know he's already working on his. I'm not starting on mine, but I've got a fair picture of the.
Yeah, but we haven't started the knife throwing and all that stuff. We haven't had the reindeer games yet, or the hunger games, I should say.
I have my ideas.
Take it.
I got to read a book on how to prevail at budget.
Let's wait for him. He's still on.
I don't mind doing it until 19, it's, yeah, later than 6.
19, 18.
19. I just need it like 6:30.
Yeah.
So I can change.
Oh, actually, I won't be in town. Sorry. Yeah, I'll be gone.
It's so cumbersome to get everybody, that's why I said.
One-on-one.
Maybe we just one-on-one, catch as catch can and.
I'll be back Tuesday though.
I can't do Tuesday, I can do Wednesday maybe.
Wednesday's fine. I guess I'm really lost of why we're meeting this early. I mean, I've sat here and listened to this for.
Yeah, I'm not sure we couldn't wait till mid-July.
I'm not arguing that point, Dan, I'm just, that's what he threw out as the.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a little premature for me anyway.
I think, listen, I think we shouldn't meet until I talk to you all individually. We need to bring your speed.
How about after one of the first council meetings in July? Does that work?
We have a date?
Suggestion.
Yes.
How long do you think this goes? An hour?
I'd say an hour and a half to two hours tops.
Oh, we'll go two hours.
We'll put an hour and a half cap on it, how's that compromise?
And what about after our council meeting in July? And what about after our council meeting in July? Because we have conflicts with some of the council on the 19th.
Okay. In July? Is July gonna be too late for the supervisors? I mean.
No, no, not at all. 24th would be fine with me. I mean, we're just.
24th of July?
Yeah. I mean, we'll not have.
Because they're not bringing, bringing the budget till the end of July.
We'll not have formulated anything.
Oh, okay. I just, what I didn't want to do is have you guys put a lot of time and effort into something. I don't think anything we do is gonna really conflict with your, the micro part of your budgeting. But I wouldn't want it to, you to think it would and, we gotta start over?
No. Well, everybody knows what they want already.
Right.
And so Sandy will get the report from the state on the 30th or the 1st or whatever. That's a holiday weekend. So we won't do anything until we come back.
Yeah, we will get our allocations and first.
The first time we talk about it will be on the 10th. We'll probably talk in the department head meeting before this meeting.
Okay.
In the morning, which anybody's invited to. But, so we will really not really get going until the 10th.
I'm good with July 24th as long as you guys.
Do it hour, do it before.
Before or after?
I can do 24th.
Before or after?
Before. Hour cap.
I don't know if an hour's gonna be enough, honestly.
Well, we can sure.
Well, we got, we, we're gonna have our one-on-one time too.
True.
So.
Let's do that. And we kind of, if we want to pick the brains of kind of the people that are making, that are in the trenches, we need to reach out to these people and talk to them before. That gives us plenty of time as a council. 24th. Does that sound good?
You do a 5:30.
The 24th? Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll figure it out.
And if we don't, shame on us.
I'll join you in progress if I can get it right.
And so what we really ought to.
Yes.
Have the meeting an hour and 15, start an hour and 15 minutes before the regular meeting. So we have a little gap there.
So 5:15.
5:15?
Yep.
So, yeah, can you do?
I'll catch up if I can.
Okay. I'll speak for you if you're not there.
Right.
We hear that a lot.
Yeah. We'll, we'll just assign.
Let's see how I get everybody coming to meeting. I'll go, I'll speak.
Anything we need to figure out in, in any homework, we'll sign to Scott.
You know, and I think, I think the 24th probably is more appropriate because a lot of things are gonna gel by then.
Right. Yeah, that's right. We won't even have the.
We'll get budget projections by the first week in August.
All right.
I have a quick question about this. Do I need to label this as a work session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And we're gonna get together on the other one.
And are the supervisors good with this with the expectation that we will be talking to you one-on-one too?
Yeah, I don't need to know about it. I mean, you guys talk to them anytime you want, but I, I really want to.
We talk about our ability.
Both.
Okay.
Because one of the things that, you know, I, I definitely, our council, every one of us and every one of the people, the supervisors, every one of the employees, I really truly believe they want to do what's best for Ellisville. And where we have friction is when we all have different ideas of what's best and it comes to a vote and it's conflicting. But really, if you break down a lot of these things, there's overlap. And I think we need to focus on the overlap unless, instead of the divisions. And I think that.
Well, I'm, I might disagree just because, well, I still think we're like the Three Stooges. We're victims of circumstance. And the circumstance still dictates our budget. We've not got to the point where we have enough money to say, oh, let's do this and oh, let's do that. It's something we can talk about, but I've never really felt free with the money up till now. And I mean, I'm kinda.
Hopefully.
Can't wait to hear how our budget, how our monies are gonna be this year after, you know, the raises we put together. I.
But I mean, as an example, you know, if, if, if we know there's a cost coming up, a, a big capital expense, I mean, we gotta plan for that. And by setting something aside. Because if we can afford the bond payments yearly, we can afford to set aside less money without paying the interest rate.
Well, and if we're gonna talk about things like that, then indeed we do need to be planning.
Right.
Ahead. And, and once again, that Baker Tilly meeting where we talked about revenue streams is gonna be important. Because we're gonna have to make decisions that make you do things that are not intuitively a good idea. I mean, we're, we're going to have to be business people.
Well, I, I disagree that it's not a good idea. The town actually has to have a very cash positive balance sheet if we are going to do any of the things that we need to do for a town. And I, I will die on this hill. Debt destroys us. I mean, we, we may not have that much in debt service now, but I see time and time again, cities like Bloomington, Indianapolis, taking out bonds and bonds and bonds. Eventually the piper's gotta be paid. Guess what? If you're not taking out bonds and you actually are planning for these expenses, makes it a whole lot easier. Where I was going with the courthouse, they didn't have to bond to do that. The, look at the, the sidewalks. I don't, were those sidewalks like a, in their, like on Second Street in Sale? Those, some of those look like they're limestone.
Yeah.
They are.
Right. Were those, were those private people that did that or did the town do it?
Probably something to do with Matthew Brother Stone quarry back.
But more than likely, the town may have done it. I don't know. But someone afforded to do that. And we can't afford to do that now. Because what we're doing, we're treading water. And I really think with our vision, we have to plan not for, like Scott said, Tuesday. We need to plan for Tuesday in 2030. And one of the things, Mike, I remember when I first came on the council in 2019, one of the things you had said, and I've heard you say it every year, is you need to know a vision from us. Well, that's what I'm, I'm hoping. I, I'm, no, I'm not hoping. We will. We will get that vision to you. And we will get, that vision will get to the supervisors. Because I think we're all on the same page. We're just saying what we need differently. I really do. And I don't think of those decisions we have to make as negative. I think that there, those decisions are ones that when it's explained to people properly ahead of time, they can say, oh, I can see this. Not everybody, but. And I, I think there's a rumbling to motion for adjourn. So we've all agreed to the date.
I gotta learn to talk louder.
That's okay. I got good hearing. And I did, I did go on to, I played the role of Mike here at the town council. But anyway, anything else from the council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
We're adjourned. I did not realize.